Hi, this is live.
We were just talking, we've been camping at the proper time, so we got caught in the horrendous rain. Last night.
Yeah, it came down someplace and it was really hard.
So we got to climb up the proper time. It probably be six hours. And it would slow down, and then half hour just intense rain, and then slow down, and then another half hour. From like, what, 3:00 in the morning till 9:00, 10:00 in the morning. But it's good, so. It's what you get when you camp.
Happy to prove. It's July, so. The water's clear.
Yeah. Oh, no, I don't want to complain about that. Evening, Eric. How are you? Good. Alright, 7:00, we'll call the meeting to work. Uh, first item on the agenda is Glenn Greenwood. Uh, Glenn, can you see through memo? I think you guys should have got this. Uh, from Glenn, um...
Oh, did you get that? Oh, because I sent it.
Yes.
I have a revised one.
Oh, you have a revised one?
Because I promised.
Sure, if you ever do it. Do you want to pass that out?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you can just, you know, discuss the changes. I forwarded, um, the earlier version to them, so they could just at least read it for, uh, the meeting.
Absolutely.
Oh, and you're... So, um, thank you, Glenn, if you discuss the memo, the changes that, um, in terms of the suggestions from the other members of the planning board.
Sure.
And then we can get into a discussion about what I think the town needs to do.
Can I applaud you for that?
Yeah.
Has anybody talked to the Vernings?
I don't believe so. I believe so, but the planning board spoke about this at the meeting on 14th of July. So a couple of weeks ago, and almost, not quite, a couple of weeks ago. Of course, um, and really wanted to determine what they wanted to.
So do you think it's appropriate to have that conversation with help end of year?
No, no, I don't, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take any action at all, Ty. This is more educational for us to understand what the issues are, but I, I, I don't disagree with you. I think that we need to have them come in here, if they so choose, to talk about this, once we've educated ourselves on it and talk to them.
I mean, I don't think we, I don't think it's appropriate to have discussions about them, where especially when it's outlined here now, where nobody has talked to them about it. And has anybody from the planning board visited the farm to look at some of these issues?
Uh, I have, I have visited the farm, but not recently. I've been told within 16 months since I've been on site.
Okay, because your memo talks about consulting with council. And I don't think it's appropriate to consult with council at this point without having talked to the Vernings and without having been to the farm.
Okay, um, here's my response to that. Um, I think it's really appropriate for the town to discuss the concepts that are driving the discussion. And so, understanding, um, how is only may or may not be affected by agri-related issues is something that I think either the planning board or the board itself can talk with their council about. And they can do it without bringing up any person's name. Um, there are issues that are driving this that I think may apply elsewhere in the town, and it might be something that the board wants to, to give the council about. So, I'm, I'm always one for including whoever is involved in the number of discussion. And I don't agree. The first time that I was involved in this issue, I had never met a woman before, and that's why I didn't apply. To see what was going on, so I could understand what the discussion is. So, I'm not trying to marginalize your response at all, I just want to make it clear that from my perspective, there are lots of things between the board and the council, um, without somebody being present.
So, I would actually like to make a motion to table this discussion until our next meeting, so that the Vernings can also be here to hear the discuss, to hear the concerns that you have with this memo and that the planning board has. Just to give them an opportunity to be informed by what is happening before it becomes a, you know, a public discussion without them even having been informed of this issue. That, that's my motion, to just wait until our next meeting to discuss it, so that the Vernings can also be here.
Alright, the motion is on the table. Um, uh, let me, let's have a discussion about that. My concern here right now is that the town is now aware of some potential liabilities of a structure that has been used with public use that, uh, first of all, was not, did not go through what I would consider, uh, normal and what is likely proper, uh, permanent. Electrical, what did I say? Excuse me, electrical issues, uh, no inspection for hoodies for a building that needs to have hoodies. There is a, some kind of a, of a cook, cook, um, cooking area as part of this building. Um, so from a fire hazard, from an electrical hazard, from a structural integrity hazard, we now have a structure that is being used by the general public. And if something happens there, and the town was aware of it, and did not act in a, a, um, hasty manner to address it, then the potential liability for us, if somebody is injured or is there a problem there, will be enormous. And that's my concern here, is we have what appears to be an unlicensed structure in a zone not allowed for restaurants and bars, the town is now aware of it, and if we delay action on it... And I'm not saying we take action tonight, but I don't think that we table this and wait another two or three weeks, uh, to, to address it. I think that we need to act in haste here, and act in a manner that says that this issue came up, and we respond, we responded in as timely a manner as we could in order to address it.
But nobody has spoken to the owners, nobody has spoken to them about building inspections, about their licenses. I'm just saying that I think this discussion is more appropriate when they have an opportunity to be here and discuss these issues, because...
I understand what you're saying, but I don't think we table this and not have a discussion about this. Instead of us getting the information from Glenn, who has worked with the planning board, we have a discussion about what the issues are on the table. In the meantime, we do our homework, so that when we have the Vernings come in here, we are prepared. Otherwise, we will be ill-prepared to either address or discuss the issues, and it will further delay whatever action this town may or may not have to take to rectify what appears to be a situation that we have to deal with.
Again, it may not be a situation, because nobody has talked to the Vernings, nobody is asking to be in a meeting, so this might be complete, like, nothing burger. You know what I mean?
You, you have to do something with that there.
I just, I think that they need to have an opportunity to talk about this, and it all, like, according to your memo, it says that this is all based on social media posts. Like, nobody has been there to talk to the owners, nobody has been there to talk about their licensure, their inspections, what happened with that building, what the purpose of the building is. I think they need to be in here, so they have an opportunity to address these. And if what you're saying is that we're not going to make any movement on this tonight, then it doesn't matter if we wait and table it for another couple of weeks. Because it's not fair for us to do anything tonight, if they have not even had the opportunity to address it. They haven't been invited to a planning board meeting where this is discussed.
Focus, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
But they haven't, you know, they weren't...
They, they actually, the last planning board meeting, they were on the agenda, they chose not to attend.
Were they notified that they were on the agenda?
I believe Jeff Kutter notified them that they were on the agenda, yes.
So they did not say that they, they were on the agenda in July 14th meeting, were informed of it and chose not to attend?
I believe they were informed of it, it was on the agenda, this was raised actually prior to that meeting, it was, it was nothing, it was nothing, um, you know, last minute with respect to this item. Larry Shaw had raised the issue, um, and, and Jeff Kutter thought it was of importance that we put it immediately on the agenda for the board meeting.
But nobody, we called them now.
I, I, again, it's my understanding that they chose not to attend. I, I'm not chair of that, of that board, that is not my role and responsibility there.
That's not my understanding. I was not, I was not told that the Vernings were going to meet. But I found out about the discussion item the morning of the meeting. And after the meeting, the planning board asked me to compile a list of concerns to provide to the board of selectmen, so the board of selectmen could understand what most concerned them. So that's, that's the purpose of the memo, correct?
And I guess, I feel like as those steps were set, because if you had talked to the Vernings and found this information out, I mean, I don't know what, other than, you know... I don't know what our responsibility would be if you had, if you had first addressed the Vernings. If we had addressed the Vernings last week when all of this information came up, we might be in a better place to have this discussion tonight.
Well, we had, this board had no knowledge about the issues, no knowledge about the specifics from the planning board, no indication or information from the planning board yet, there was no way that we could address this last week.
No, I'm just saying that we should have called them last week when we decided that they were going to be on the agenda for tonight, which they're, you know, this issue is, is only listed as you, so.
This, but this is education of this board.
Excuse me, anybody looking at the agenda would not know that the Vernings were being talked about tonight. All they would know is that the town planner is here, and all I'm saying...
I'm asking for two items, so.
And all I'm saying is that some, there was an opportunity last week, if this was what was coming down, which I didn't know about, there was an opportunity last week if the Vernings were going to be on the agenda, to contact them and not know that we have an issue, or the planning board should contact them and say that we have an issue. However, it is not fair, especially if we are not going to take any action on this tonight, to do this without them here, because there may not be any action that needs to be taken.
Okay, there's a couple of points listed in that. One, is the usual liability the town, whether, and we can back it down to investigation based analogies to a law or a personal investigation, which you can make an analogy that it's a civil thing. It's not a...
I'm sorry, what law, what we talked to?
It's, it's, this is a civil investigation, find out if there's violation of the conversation. So it's an analogies to a civil investigation.
I was, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to...
So, in any investigation like that, a lot of times, well, not, the entities that are responsible do the investigation process, and then in the process, they determine what is necessary to move forward with additional actions, such as interviewing people that are involved, in this case, the Vernings. But you have your homework and your labor done prior, so that when you talk about it, you will prepare with the knowledge. Second, I concur with potential liability, if there is no violation, or if there are no issues, it becomes a good point. That said, if something transpired this weekend as a result of a faulty construction, faulty building, worst case scenario, and the town knew about it, and had not been doing this review of it, then it could have been a very good case of a major liability against the town on this issue. I understand the point, Jack, that if the process works, there is nothing to preclude before the selectmen doing their labor and investigating and considering whether there is probably a cause for lack of better term to move forward with the issues at hand. I have no issue discussing that, and I would most certainly guarantee my ability to ensure the Vernings had every opportunity to present their case, to present their issues, to be dealt with fairly, if any other citizens in the town would.
Again, I don't understand why we can't just wait until they come in and have this discussion, especially if we're not taking any action tonight. I think they benefit from hearing this discussion about what the planning board's issues are, why it seems to be in violation of the RSA. And I just don't think it's done in good faith for talking about it here without having them in person to understand the issues that were brought to the planning board, and to be able to speak to them, because we might not even need an investigation about this, unless they can answer these questions and provide the documentation.
I think there's a basis, just how Larry Shaw, the building inspector, raising his concerns to the select board, that he had a responsibility to address this issue in the most common manner, as opposed to delaying, when there's not going to be any action taken, it's an educational process for lack of better terminology.
And like I said, if we're not taking any, any movement on it, then, you know, we have this memo, we can read it, but I don't think we need to discuss it without the Vernings here.
Alright, there's a motion on the table, is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails, let's move on. Glenn, can you please present to us, uh, the discussion of the planning board, the issues that you have concerns with, and, um, your understanding of, of the matter?
Certainly. The planning board is concerned basically from two entities. One, um, the farm stand and the continued existing, um, nature of the farm stand, and making sure that it complies with the state law as far as, uh, value derived from onsite products.
Thirty-five percent, correct.
And, and, and for clarification, that's from onsite as well as any other farms that the owner may own.
Correct.
So, I know that they own farmland in Canterbury, so anything between Canterbury and that farm needs to meet the thirty-five percent threshold to fall under, under 2134A.
Right, but the state law is also, the town's law, because the town is just a block of the state's law.
Yep.
And the planning board, um, believes that that information was never been supplied to them, and wanted to bring that to the board so I can see if that information could be received from them.
Sir, is that information being requested?
I, I don't believe...
No, it's not the planning board's proper venue to do so.
No, but by any entity, or charge for that?
No, it would come from this board, the request for the accounting information. So, uh, just as some background, this really was raised when the Vernings came to the town and asked for the town to support their liquor license for the farm stand. And, um, uh, they were here talking about the specifics of, um, the, the request for liquor license, and the planning board, um, agreed to support and sent a letter of support to the liquor commission in support of their liquor license request, recognizing that while a commercial entity is not allowed in that zone, as long as they are complying with RSA 2134A, which allows that, that as long as it's more than thirty-five percent threshold of, of materials, that we accept that as the, um, as the exception under the agro-tourism statute to allow them to operate there. But if they did not meet that threshold, then they are then in a zoning violation, and we would have concerns not only about that, but also of, of the liquor license as well at that point in time. So that's why the planning board, in last meeting...
The board of selectmen wrote that letter to the liquor.
Yes, we wrote that letter, we signed that letter and sent it off. So, at the last meeting, the issue then came back up about thirty-five percent, which is why the planning board is now requesting the board of selectmen to ask for the information to make sure that it is actually complying with the requirements under the RSA, and it's not therefore a commercial establishment violating the zone.
And this, the second area of concern from the planning board was initiated, I believe, through the funds of the building company.
Yes.
And it is knowledge that there have been improvements made onsite without building permits, due to the, the parameters of, uh, well, two parameters. One, maybe there's a very limited extension of existing towns, but that's for very small, specific, um, farm structures. Here, it is one of the ones that called out the improvements itself, and so...
Well, the, the chicken groups that they have there is another, we have another example.
Yep. The concern that they raised was that there had been improvements onsite that exceed those kind of small structures that the, these, these buildings exempt. And if they in fact do exceed those exceptions, um, there's a possibility then that the requirement had improvements to add structures according to 67432, I think. They kind of like cited in the, uh, in the memo.
You did, 67432, David.
Is that, that's the administrative decision?
Yes.
Okay. So, that, that allows that if there are new activities, um, even if they are of agricultural nature, they may still be subject to the town building process. And so, the town, the planning board, might really involve in the building process, that's really the board of selectmen's, um, um, feel, wanted to bring that concern forward. Because if in fact, building permit seven, and then either asked for or granted, and there hasn't been review from the town, on structures that seem to be used, they seem to be presently used for a couple, and that is concerning. And so, the planning board wanted to make sure that the board was aware, was aware of the concern.
So, did Larry, was Larry saying that he didn't inspect the building when Warren Andrew was, when it was built?
I believe with his, um, with his discussion with the planning board was that he was early on asked about, um, an improvement onsite for a lean-to roof.
Two, they, they submitted two permits, one was for the, just a, um, a raised deck to put the coolers on. Then the second permit that was requested was for basically a lean-to roof to cover.
A roof, so a roof.
And, um, outside of that, Larry has not, did not inspect anything else with respect to that structure.
That is just, that is just...
Yes, to the planning board.
So there, were there any permits called, but in a...
No, outside of the request for the deck and the request for the lean-to roof, there were no permits requested for anything else.
No, I'm saying did, because Larry just said that he didn't inspect it, but that doesn't mean a permit was called, correct? Did they have, did they have...
No, Larry does the permits in town.
If, if a permit was requested, Larry obviously would have been there.
Yep.
And, and you said that some, um, buildings are subject to the town permit process, but what, what might be some of that?
The ones that were presented called out specifically in the building companies, and they are the small, um, agricultural, small purpose uses, like chicken groups and dairy groups.
Any further information?
And so those, those were the concerns. Uh, I did send a memo to the planning board members to make sure that I did leave things out, and there were a couple of things that need to slide out. One, which would be this creative decision regarding the farm stand, and that was something that, that they wanted to text, and that's why it was...
Oh, this is from 2015?
Yes, that was, that was a farm stand approval from 2015, that was granted by, um, the building inspector and the board of selectmen.
Yep. And as I'm reading this, what this is saying, that even for the farm stand, a building permit was required. Am I reading this memo correctly?
I believe that that was the interpretation by the building inspector.
Okay, by the building inspector, and I assume the boards, that's a board also signed this. Oh, and that, and the language of our ordinance is in there. Small dairy rooms, wheat cellars, poultry houses, farms, storage sheds, and other similar structures. That's a really good point, Ty.
And then the key verdict, I think, and that it's not coming in, and by retail use, it's a proper transaction.
Right, but this was in 2015, and subsequent to that, they have received permits with that farm stand?
No, you, yeah, no, 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 I, I think what, what Glenn is talking is, is showing us the administrative decision as an example of addressing the types of buildings onsite.
In fact, that the farm stand, either operating under the state laws, was granted by the, the town, right?
Correct. Correct. But as a farm, as a, let me make a clip, as a farm stand as defined under the state statutes.
Correct. And so that's, that's the essence of the memo, um, to bring the concerns of the planning board, have, have they been understood, so that the board of selectmen will be aware of, of those concerns.
Alright, any other questions for Glenn?
No, I just, just looking at this meeting from the words I do, I support the Vern business, I support their participation in town, I support people going there, but it has to be done by the members, in the sense that we cannot accept any increased liability or potential liability of the town. And that's the line of concern, is to this situation, to make sure it's resolved as far as all the liability is, and the council of the town, you, you don't accommodate, you don't, and in a timely manner. So I, I mean, I can understand that it's one of the expanded businesses, I understand why you want to move forward, but in accordance with the power of this agreement, these need to resolve almost timely manner, so that it's moved ahead with the process.
I'm very sorry for not trying to introduce myself, I mean, I'm Glenn Greenwood, and I'm not sure if you've been...
Oh, we, yep. Carmen, Carmen.
I was going to, we gotta get off, sorry about that.
And do you know that, because this is the planning board?
I'm Jackie Salani.
I'm Jackie, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I didn't introduce myself, so...
Any other questions? For Glenn?
When does the planning board meet next?
They'll be in until, uh, second Tuesday in August.
So that would be...
It'd be the 11th.
Yeah, uh, second Tuesday, August 9th.
No, second Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, August 11th, you're correct.
It was 12.
11th, August 11th. Okay, well, I appreciate you coming in, at least making us work the issues.
I have another thing that I want to talk to you about.
About it, Glenn.
From another planning side of things, um, it's, it's been a while since the CIP, the CIP has been, um, cooperatively constituted, and I want to do that, and I just wanted to make you folks aware that I'm... that I'm going to be gathering your department heads. And they're going to problem with the state. We have this written, and you want to see that, so you have to send me information. So, I'd just like you to respond to that. They do have this training information if you want to do the CIP. They've said it's a capital improvements program. It's a six-year schedule of town capital projects. We really need those projects listed and described in order for us to charter that piece of video. And so, I just, it would maybe be better if we had a more formal and more aggressive way. So, folks, they're likely going to be asking you to organize this person running the hall.
Now, you know what, we'll preemptively send an email to them informing them that.
That would be great, yeah, that would be great. They don't want to get an email from you.
Right, they'll wonder what the hell is.
Yeah, dangerous, well, separate business group.
They're an option for community members to be involved in this and then have a little discussion?
Absolutely, absolutely. When it's required, they're offered by the planning board. And they're tasked with the unit, which is weird. It's weirdly given by the legislature to conquer that think that the planning board is a razzmatazz. I mean, about general financial budget, thankfully, we know that it exists. Weird by law, even the law has to do it. So, we will do it at that public hearing. They will lobby, they will be public input. But anybody that wants to help me put it together, I am more than happy to have that assistance.
What end scale is putting together that program?
I will send out a solicitation with the department heads asking them to think on a six-year time horizon what their capital expenditures would be. So, those capital expenditures are basically one-time capital costs. So, not, not.
Maintenance out there.
Right, not maintenance, not salaries, things that are in that amount. But seriously, capital projects in excess of ten thousand dollars that have a one-time use. And they can include, something is they include like the cruisers from the police department. But typically, police departments are a little bit more savvy and use those because of their working budget. Because they really are something.
We don't.
There, you don't choose to include. Okay, well, I will be asking the police department that to let me know what their cruiser purchase could be able to make secure. Six years. Things like bio truck purchases are really big to have in mind. Those kind of things, if you want to see. And I did want to ask you folks, how much integration are we having with the water?
So, that's a good segue.
Because they're different, they're, they're.
That's a good segue. So, before we dive into the water issue specifically, so today, we had a presentation from the consultant that we hired on the stormwater management asset inventory. And we got an update on our, it is a coil cap.
Oil cap.
And we got, we received grant money from the state to do it. So, they just completed it, they sent us the draft report. And this all kind of dovetails into several issues. But that's an issue that I think needs to be addressed in the capital improvements plan. And so, we now have a lot of data on it.
Isn't that draft report?
Yes, I'll send that to you. But, and we can talk more about what's the issues with the report because, you know, there's only so much information that we have available on the assets. But there are some issues there that need to be addressed. But it was also, we received notice today, very much needed actually, that the town received grant money for one of the top two priorities for replacement of stormwater pipe. So, while that probably won't go into the need, but we, you know, because of that, is also now changing our paving, likely changing our paving plan for this summer. Because it's going to be on Summer and Pleasant, which we're planning on paving. But if we're getting grant money to redo those pipes, we're not going to do that. The grant money will probably come next year. So, it will probably be Summer and Pleasant next year. But you don't want to, you don't want to do it twice.
Yeah. There's no good reason to do it twice.
But that information, I'll get to you on the stormwater asset. And then, and then, like I said, we'll send, we'll jointly send out an email to all the department heads informing them that you'll be asking about that. Now, on the water side, that's a whole different kettle of fish.
It's a different kettle of fish.
And it's actually, the town doesn't, very much of a problem. The town doesn't assess, assess impact fees based on the water district.
I believe it can be.
I don't think you can, we can't. I mean, because it's not.
It's a different tax entity.
It is, it is not a town entity, it is a separate entity. So, while it's probably good for you to have a conversation with them about what they need doing, you know, you can talk to the planning board as a whole as to how to handle it. I think it's worthwhile for you to talk to them.
I know.
Does the grant money for the stormwater pipes replace the arborman's plan?
No, no, this is all new, this is all. The arbor money was sort of like cover replacements. This is actually, this is a multi-hundred thousand dollar, I assume. I haven't seen the details yet, multi-hundred thousand dollars to replace. We have a decent pipe from the beginning of summer down Pleasant. It connects to Coed. This is going to replace the Summer and Pleasant. The problem with that pipe is, while it's in good condition, it's size too small because it's basically, we're taking all the water getting dumped by the state groves into our system. And so, in effect, what we're going to end up doing is enlarging those pipes from Summer and Pleasant. Better sizing it so we don't get the stormwater runoff down, down Summer Street. The size of Summer Street. So, I, like I said, I haven't seen the details, but the woman from D E S who was on today informed us during our session about the, about the report that the grants that Bill reserve requested got approved. And I think the rain garden one got approved as well from the library in town hall. So, which is great.
Do you know, do you know that grant can open for stormwater break-in? Or is it just replacing?
It goes specifically for, the grant was specific for Summer and Pleasant.
That, and why I want to, to.
Any else for Glenn? All right, thank you, Glenn.
Glad to hear you all here.
Exactly. Next item on the agenda is Brian Epstein. We saw Brian earlier today, and because of the grant information, he needs to go back and look at what he's repaving in light of the fact that his plan for Summer and Pleasant is now probably pushed to next year. So, I asked him to go back, and if that's the case, go back and do that. One thing he did say was, he's definitely going to do ball till in intersection. A ball till is here.
September.
Yeah, it should be in September for the, he does like getting paving in the summer. Because when cars go over the hot asphalt, it rips it up before it has a chance to cool. So, and then he had mentioned, instead of doing Summer and Pleasant, maybe doing a by sand mornin' ball till. Because we're working up there on the intersection already. And that's, I think Sand mornin' ball till is the next priority after Summer and Pleasant. He's going back and looking at it all again to figure out what the priorities are. So, it would be useless for him to come in and try to do that. So, he'll be at our next meeting to talk about that. Yep.
I did ask Brian, when he was here, if he heard from Dr. Hill in the conservation commission about that.
Yep.
And he said he didn't.
Okay.
Oh, she said she hadn't shown, she's our bet.
Oh, she's our bet too?
Yeah.
So, she's got a three.
She's, she's.
But that was, she was in, what, two weeks ago, was it? Whenever she was in, he is not heard from the conservation commission about all this milk and lowland.
Oh, she, she had said that they had and that. Maybe they were just a miss.
All right, well, I'll try to connect them. I know them both. All right, next item, Department of Revenue Correspondence. This is a notification about SB two thirty-nine, which is dealing with the requirement of the town to send our audits to the Department of Revenue Administration. We sent them the 2020 audit when they made the request. They also requested 2021 audit and prior correspondence obviously related to this. We don't have our 2021 done yet, we informed them of that. But as soon as the 2021 is done, we'll send them that. This is only a notification, not specific necessarily to us per se. But they sent this around generally, so. But we should, we are complying with the requirements there.
When are the audits being reviewed?
When we have them done?
No, what are they due, the state?
They're due when we, when we have them. I mean, there's no, there's no specific, you know, you need your audit done by June first. Maybe because of different towns operate in different fiscal years. We operate on a calendar year, some towns are July one to July, you know, June thirtieth. So, they don't have a requirement like that. But they, I assume they require it before the end of the following fiscal year. I think that's what the due date is.
Well, it says that the required audit is not completed by June eight.
Yeah, I think it's the end of the fiscal, of the following fiscal year is when it's required. Because obviously, it's dealing with required fiscal year. So, you, you need time for your auditors to actually confirm the audit. But we, ours should be done, actually very soon. So, we should be, we should have it to them probably before later.
We need to notify them or take them?
We did, we notified them and they made it twice. Checks, I think that's all done. We have prior meeting minutes. Take a look at those. Any questions, comments, edits, minutes? No? I'll make a motion that we accept as written. The Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Second line, Bobby, all in favor?
Aye.
And just as a follow-up, I received word back from Derek about the letter we were asking about the water recovery program.
Yes.
I sent him the draft, he got back to me, he said it looks real good. So, I'll circulate that to you guys. I didn't know if you had any need between you. I'll circulate to you guys, you can take a look and then we'll get it out. But that's simply the way. Any other matters that we want to address? I guess meeting dates, just do that.
My name's George, one, three, and twenty-two.
You'll go on the back end?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to do the ninth and the thirtieth? But I'm not going to tell you other dates.
I'm good with everything except the twenty-fifth. Whatever.
Exactly, you have any other dates? What's that?
Nineteenth thirty of this month.
Okay, we'll put on that for now. On the pole license, Sue was reaching out to Rockwood or Fraser about it. So, I don't think, I don't think there's anything possible in the action to rip. Just a few guys from him. And then, I'll be honest, I did not look at the text, my stuff. I don't know if you guys did, you're public, it's after the, you guys come on. Anything else, any other items? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Bobby, second, either second, all in favor?
Sorry.
Aye. Great. Thank you very much.
Right, so you want?
I would try, I would try. How's the summer, Mary? Busy, very busy. Have you been traveling?